Today is Tuesday, November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is six P M. I'd like to call the regular village board meeting to order. We call the budget hearing to order. We look at the two thousand twenty-four proposed budget, general capital and debt funds. This came from recommendations from last night's planning committee meetings. That's on your planning commission. Or it's finance and personnel.
Okay.
Is that?
We do the project.
It's. It's after the budget meeting.
Okay.
Finance, personnel. Everything.
It's all signed on screen, Danny.
Everything that we drew in the last sitting. One of the question was on. Finish that, right? Them changes.
They're in there.
Where are they at?
Four, three, two, some, one, two.
Okay.
It did not change the tax of the amount, which is.
One forty-two per thousand, hundred dollars, right?
Yep. And then you speak of a dollar forty-two. So, one hundred thousand. We'll just pay three hundred.
Judges was not, oh, that's, that's by referendum or by resolution?
Stick to the point, Danny. Let you speak out.
Just make sure everything balanced out.
Okay.
There were some things that were added last night, last minute. Percentage increase for the trustees going into next year. As we're gonna be going on for referendum and that translated to a vote. Okay. I thought it was gonna be under a thousand.
It's a three percent or something.
Three percent.
Yeah. So we're voting on a pay raise for ourselves.
You know, for the next people coming in. Yeah, vote on a pay raise for yourself. So, when a fifteen hundred dollars.
And I just produce the damage for other expenses.
We were talking about the breakdown of the water and sewage bill here. Was that part of this?
So the benefits of the taxes. One five hundred for the election judges and election administration. Where did that come from?
Um, there was a little revenue back in and saw it. Then we'll cover it.
Okay. But in essence, we're looking at a tax levy of a dollar forty-two per hundred thousand increase or two dollars and eighty-four cents for village taxes on a two hundred thousand dollar house.
Correct.
Four dollars and twenty-six cents total for the year for a three hundred thousand dollar house. Anybody wants to do the math on four hundred thousand, they can do it themselves.
And raises specifically for covering those, the raises and for the election workers specifically to cover it? Or that was just on top of what it was we needed to fund the budget?
That was the changes that were made last night in the meeting. That was suggested and recommended by the committee. That we, our election judges, we had, we had an extensive conversation about the hourly wages for library workers and the wages of wage increases that are across the board, which is what the committee believes that if we're gonna approve a three percent wage increase for all of the, the staff that we should be looking at those positions across the board. Therefore, there's a budget resolution to allow for a three percent increase in the, in the trustees and, and all the rest of the, the elected officials coming into office the following year. That hasn't been raised since two thousand nineteen, I was told, and since beforehand, prior to that. Same thing with the, uh, the, the librarians. They, they made a substantial increase in their wages to bring them up to a speed of where the other areas are and what the other librarians are paying in other districts and jurisdictions. And they brought their, their wages up to that. And that, that's where the discussion come into place with regards to the election officials and what we're paying election officials of eleven dollars an hour when a guy can go over and, and serve a at, at a holiday gas station for much more than that an hour.
So I'm actually serving as an elective worker as well. And I'm against pay raise for the election workers or for the trustees. So I don't know if you've been just lying item that either if I devote against that singularly or?
They're both on agenda.
Okay.
They're done.
Okay.
But basically to mix it up the par with everybody else, correct?
Okay.
Similar to her.
Brandon, may I ask why?
I think the people will do it for career stuff as like arrangements and stuff like that. I think they should as far as serving as a trustee or as a election official. I don't think that's really, you're not in it for the money, right? So I don't think a raise is really warranted for that.
Anybody like to make any motion?
Public hearing.
Yeah.
You could ask, does any member of the public along the, on this?
Any members of the public wanna comment?
I'd like to know if these documents are available to the public. And are they on the website? How far do I have to email you and ask for them? How, how would somebody get it?
I'll get it on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe they get, um, they're uploaded after the meeting.
Not while it's a working document, that makes sense. Is, so is the previous budget there? So you could do a comparison?
Yes.
Could you leave that there? Yeah.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, that's really quickly, just, just out of curiosity. As far as the election officials, that's how many days in the election season? I mean, how many days is an election official work?
Just so we have an idea, there's four, we're talking four, four, uh, elections this year. You got spring, spring, you got a primary, you got another primary and a fall, correct? Andrew.
Correct.
So you're talking basically four days a year.
Correct.
So you're talking an increase of one.
In essence, uh, come out to fifteen hundred dollars on this budget.
Fifteen hundred dollars for four days a year.
For the total year.
For the total year.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering how a couple of dollars an hour is gonna make fifteen hundred dollars. It's something for us one day again. Or one, or four times in a month.
Sure. The proposal was bring it from, I believe it was eleven dollars.
Fifteen to fifteen.
Fifteen.
Eleven dollars to fifteen and thirteen to seventeen.
That, I just wasn't, wasn't ready because I think that would be a really low. The difference.
Anybody else have any comment?
I might agree with Brandon that, um, many people work as an election official, not for the money, but it's getting harder and harder to be an election official in this country. And some people don't want to serve any longer. So I don't know that an increase in money will attract more people, but it might. And it's, so it's getting harder to fill those positions.
Appreciate your comment and back and forth on that. We had the same situation with, uh, public works last year in our summer health that we were hiring and offering to hire at thirteen dollars and fourteen dollars an hour. We didn't even get anybody interested in the positions. We raised it up to eighteen dollars an hour and we got two good candidates out of the matter. So they did a pretty good job this year for us. So unfortunately, the, you know, it might work to our benefit and we're hoping that that's engaged. That's why it was recommended by the committee. One minute. Isn't, isn't that a job though? I mean, you're talking about, you're talking about, if you talk apples to apples, a person on the village board or a person working for the election committee compared to somebody working to pay their bills, a little bit different of a compare. Which is, which is why we're addressing it this year, not every year. No, what you said, we got better staff because we upped the wages. It's like Kim was saying, you're not gonna get better staff because you're upping the wages to, to do the elections. They're not doing that to pay their bills. They're doing that to serve their community, I feel.
Hey, we get pizza too.
But somebody might, like me, might be missing their day job and you have to kind of fairly compensate them for that. You know, and it's disproportionate for a lot of people. And it's actually really fun and it's a great way to meet the community. I would highly recommend it, but talk to Tasia, our clerk.
It's also not just working the elections. You have to do training during the year in order to be up to speed and, and manage the election properly.
So constantly changing.
If the moment is done, we just go to the public hearing and you run for the one more quarter.
Any other comments? For the public hearing? Public comment on agenda items, two minutes per person, fourteen minutes per topic. Anybody wants to speak now is the time. Put your name and your address, please.
My name is Kathy Fuller. My address is four seven seven two hundred tenth Avenue, Somerset, Wisconsin. I stand before this village board in reference to the village trustee code of conduct. You all received a letter from my family in regards to the letter that Mr. Capper sent to all you folks about my family. It's my understanding that he made an apology on Facebook to our family. My, I have not spoke to you, my cappers, in three years. I have had you blocked. My whole family has you blocked. We would not see your apology. What you wrote about our family is a disgrace. You should be ashamed of yourself. Who do you think you are? Who do you think you are? I'll sit here for two minutes and, and wait for you to tell me. What gave you the right to share my family's story? What gave you the right to share my family's story? How do you know that? You wrote, I'm a cheat. Why have you wasted the taxpayers' dollars to send an email through the village email system? And then claim that you didn't know everybody was tatted on it? You know damn well what, how to use a computer. I know you very well, my cappers. You aren't buffaloing anybody. It's a bullshit story. And you owe my family an apology. What makes you think you don't? I've been nothing but good to you and your family and your kids. You better think about it. Cause I did have somebody contact me today that has a lawyer for defamation.
Any comments, anybody else?
I just wanted you all to meet me. I'm Shelley Andrea. My address is Ossil, Wisconsin. Um, I'm the person behind the letter that was given to all of you. And thank you very much for reading it. Um, to say that my family was totally devastated, my cappers, by that email is an absolute understatement. And you know what? Growing up, I have fought bigger bullies than you my entire life. You are a small fish in a big sea of them. And I am pretty much fearless beyond a stupid point. So if you think that I am afraid of you or that you can intimidate me like you do everyone else, you'd be sadly mistaken. And I want an apology from you. My entire family wants an apology from you because you were wrong to put that on the taxpayer money email. And if anybody thinks that they can't get it, they can. And why did it take us so long to address this? Is because it took us a while, number one, to get the email. And number two, we were devastated. We had to regroup as a family and see how we wanted to handle this. And for you to say that my nephew, who I'm very proud of, gave that email to anyone, he did not. He would not even share it with us. We had to request it from the village. So he did not share that email with us. He didn't want us to see what you wrote. And if you think for one minute that you're gonna get away with this without apologizing to either my family, you are sadly mistaken, Mr. Cappers. Because I've had about enough of you about right up to here. Because you have done nothing but hurt our family. You have hurt us in a way that we don't even know how to react with anymore. Now everybody knows. We were gonna keep it on the down low and just ask you for an apology, but you wanted to turn it around and say it was somebody else or that your smoke and screams and all your big words. You tried to turn it around and make it all about somebody else. It's not about anybody else, Mike. It is not about anybody else, but what you wrote on that email. So everybody could see it. And to say that you didn't realize what you were doing, you knew very well what you were doing. And we are here tonight because we want a public apology for our family. Because you slandered us, you defamed our family. And for what reason? No reason. But you thought it was gonna be a personal gain for you. Well, you're mistaken. And we want an apology tonight.
Anybody else for public comment?
Mary Sullivan. Not nine oh four, two hundred and eighteen, that I know. Free things. Summer events has had a fundraiser of sorts run by Mr. Cappers as a nonprofit. Where's the five oh one? Nonprofit number? Where's it been registered? Where are the funds? My cappers, you're in charge of this. Where are the funds?
This isn't for discussion.
Number two. As a committee. A certain individual in one of your committees was down the street with nine one one calls and said that Mike Cappers raped her. Is there a code of conduct here? He said he raped her. What do you say?
Anything else, Swiss or Sullivan?
One more thing. You live in Stillwater, which is not irrelevant. You claim you live in Somerset, which is not true.
I'd like to say a lot of things, but it's public comment, not public discussion, so. Have anything else to say?
What do you have to say?
You, you can answer. You wanted the board to answer when you came to all the meetings before.
Anybody else have anything to public comment?
That hurt?
Or would be closing public comments? Call the regular board meeting to order. Standing, saying the pledge of allegiance. The thing going in where it's. And who the public, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Review the minutes from October seventeenth meeting.
I've had a chance to review the meeting minutes and everything that's in order. I'd like to approve the regular meeting minutes for Tuesday, October seventeenth meeting.
Captain, second.
Brendan Crone with the first, Judge Jack with the second. Any discussion? Do you know in all favors?
Hi.
Both same time. The report's planning mission, number second, two thousand twenty-three meeting report. And who's the minutes?
Um, no. And, um, I wanted to point out that at the board meeting, the, the minutes are in the package for reference. They're, they're not, it's not necessary for the board to approve the committee minutes at every board meeting. That is for the committee to do at their meeting, their next meeting. So for future, it's just a reference point, not for a good baller.
Discuss impossible approval, Pine Vale preliminary lap, parcel one eight one dash four one one nine dash zero zero dash five hundred. Parcel one eight one dash four one one nine dash zero zero dash two hundred. And parcel number one eight one dash four one one nine dash zero zero dash three hundred.
Meeting board, uh, thanks for taking a little bit of time this evening to hear a little bit more about Pine Vale. My name is Matt Barker. I'm with Capstone Homes and, uh, it's a pleasure to, to kind of walk through this a little bit with you. I won't take too much time. You've got a busy agenda tonight. But just giving a quick introduction, first of all, the Capstone, if you can go to the next slide on this. Capstone has been in business for about twenty-five years. We're a local privately owned home builder. We're actually the largest one here in this upper, upper Midwest section of the states and grateful to be building in Wisconsin, Minnesota, and also in South Dakota, in Sioux Falls. And we do take pride in our communities, the, the places where we are at. We have a great team that are staffed in our Ramsey office. So everything we do as a company i- is focused on local and, and making sure that we're right here in our communities. We're doing to the best for our community. So just a quick introduction on that. If you can go to the next slide, I want to talk a little bit about our project and where we're at. Bob, Bob, I know has been working or the city has been working here for many years to develop the tid parcel that's on the north end of the project. You can see it squared out on the north of this, uh, this picture. Here's the kind of unique shaped parcel group. That tid parcel was originally purchased by the city for development into industrial or other commercial uses. But if, uh, if you look at the topography up there, it's extremely challenging. And it has been really difficult to bring together a plan and work for that, um, that parcel of land. A couple of years ago, we first came into Somerset and we were looking to partner with other developers to have an opportunity to start building homes. And we started in River Hills and also started in Winesap. And they gave us an introduction to Bob as well as to the rest of the city or the village and, and gave us an opportunity to start to understand how we can impact our community here in Somerset with both building homes, but also investing into the community in other ways too. We've done that over the last several years, built over fifty homes. And, um, now working with the city, with the planning commissioners, with, with you all over the last several years, we've been able to come up with a plan to develop this parcel into a residential community. The title of the community is Pine Vale. And as you, uh, have known over the last several months, we've worked through a lot of different reiterations and changes to make it work for the overall road plan for the city. This plan resembles a lot of those changes, a trail system that connects all the way through the development from a hundred and ninetyth all the way to the north. That actually is a completed trail system. There's no breaks in that. We were able to make some adjustments to make sure that, that it is completed all the way through. We've also added sidewalks. We've done a lot of effort, given a lot of effort to preserve wetlands that are in the community as well as the forested perimeters that are all the way around. There's very little surrounding neighborhood portions that we didn't leave some forest or some forested area. It's a very heavily forested community up there. But we were still also able to create some road connections and services through there so that future parcels to the north, to the east and to the west all could eventually in time become a part of, um, the community that they so chose to do. So just giving you a quick overlook, we're planning on building a lot of different single family home products. This is a single family community. Uh, in the preliminary flat, we are asking for, um, this to be given, uh, the P U D zoning. Uh, and it's because there's two different home style sizes. One is your standard eighty foot lot, but there's also a portion of this that, um, that, uh, there was desire to see a little bit, a little bit more density. So there's sixty-five foot lots and that's where the P U D came into place. So you'll see that, uh, kind of a break line midsection where the top is sixty-five foot lots, the bottom is all eighty foot. So that first house plan you saw is one of our smaller split entry homes. It's kind of a starter level home. And you can just scroll through, there's a few other pictures in there you can peek at. Sorry, you're taking notes and. But a combination of split entry and two-story homes, two, three, three car garages. There's a lot of different variations that we're able to do up there. It's very similar product to what we did in River Hills and what we've also been doing in Winesap with the exception, we're not doing the detached townhome community down there. So again, for questions, if you have any on the, um, the preliminary plot that's in front of you. And, and again, I just want to say thank you. It's been a privilege working over the last several years to bring this plan to tonight. This is a lot of effort and a lot of work and looking forward to continuing that as we get into the rest of the winter here. And hopefully we can break ground on this project starting February first, if our schedule still stands with, uh, with the city and where we're working at.
I have one question, Brendan.
Yes, sir.
So we are working to put in the new ordinance to require fiber optic cable to be laid. So you have internet to your home right away. This alleviates a lot of headaches with contractors have to come back and put in lines and, and stuff like that. So we're working on retooling that ordinance right now. Is that something that you guys would, would be okay with, with us having an ordinance that says, requiring fiber optic cable to be laid at the time of say like phone line or whatever kind of soft utilities you would be laying at that time?
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, we're just talking about this a little bit this week with, with Bob, the, the idea of a joint trench, um, process. So all of the utility contractors are all going into the community at the same time. And yes, we would, we would like the opportunity for fiber optic cable, gas, electric, all of those to be going in at the same time at the front end of development, not parceled in here and there as we go through the development. And our homes are starting to get transitioned over to the fiber optics coming in. That, that actually takes a little bit of work to transition the home from the standard phone line and cables packages to something a little bit different with the fiber optic. So we were actually going through that change ourselves to make sure that we're ready for that market shift as well.
Okay. So yeah, we're, we're working on that right now. So, um, that probably will bring by the spring.
Yeah.
But yeah, it just ends up with a better customer service experience for all the folks and for the internet company and just. But yeah, it just ends up with a better customer service experience for all the folks and for the internet company and just just everything in general.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the village bought this property about fifteen years ago.
Two thousand eight or nine.
So then basically it's, we're gonna, it was gonna be an industrial park. And it just, it was a topography didn't allow for that. And then we're actually able to.
Yeah, the property didn't cash flow with uh, I think we got six lots out of it. Um, so. The development cost on top of land purchase and what we were gonna get out of lots just didn't cash flow. Um, so we had to scrap that and come up with some creative ideas.
And this got approved unanimously through the planning commission and that's been great to work with. And I'd like to make a motion to.
Question is deferred. Mark, Matt, um, on these, a couple of these up here were like item lot fifty-seven and and fifty-six, you have them up enough in wetland areas. Is that, is that going to take that wetland out or is that gonna leave that wetland in that lot? And how are you gonna build in those areas?
There is uh, wetland mitigation permits are in the process of acquiring. There are, there are wetlands within this that are going to be. Um, basically, we're gonna buy credits to remove those wetlands and time areas. Where they, they wouldn't, they would completely impact the ability to develop those, that coldness act, for example, um, and down in the lower parts. There's wetlands in the center.
So that, so those will be mitigated.
Those will be mitigated.
And then over on forty-two, forty-three, forty-one, they're less than a, they're less than a quarter acre lot. They're uh, point two, two acre lots. Is there, uh, that's a, that's one of them is only a point two acre lot, you know, twenty percent acre lot. Is that, that's pretty. What's the idea of, uh, I mean, you couldn't get a. Twelve hundred square foot home on there and still have setbacks on there, could you?
No, we can. Those are sixty-five foot lots with the seven and a half side setbacks. So you're still putting in a fifty foot pad. So there's, there's actually plenty of room for homes to still go in on those. So it's, it's those are the narrower where the density was requested on the, on the upper section. You're looking at the, the um, sixty-five foot pad. Density area of that plan.
Or is that's not the lot size? That's the pad size?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure.
So you're looking at the, the total lot size average.
Right.
But your, your, your actual lot dimensions.
Sixty-five by one thirty-five.
Yeah, correct.
And then there was one over here. I thought I seen it was like forty-sevens under, under fifty on the one end.
Yeah.
And uh.
And very wide at the front end.
Well, it's got, it's got a kind of a radius curve on it.
So in that case, your home's gonna, your home's gonna sit right against the front setback line. And then it's gonna be a pie-shaped lot, so narrow back to back.
I guess what they're, you know, I guess what I was asking is, I know this is up and it's off on that, that far side, the far. Right side of the, of the plot, but um, so it's good, it's not gonna be too well seen, but that's gonna be where the majority of your dense houses are going to be then, right?
The whole north.
Basically stacked on each other.
Uh, I don't know. I would call it stacked. It's actually fairly similar to Winesap um, in dimension. Actually, it's, I think it is the same as what we did in Winesap.
And the setbacks are twenty-five?
Setback in the front. Size of seven and a half.
Seven and a half. So seven and a half setback and then house and.
So it'll be fifteen feet setback total, seven and a half and seven and a half.
On each end.
On each side.
Right.
Yeah.
So you have fifteen foot, what, seven and a half, and then you, you have. Basically uh, fifty foot. Of space to be able to put uh, your, your house in and then still be able to and or garage.
Yep, that would be typically, we can still do a three car garage. Pretty standard, one of our split entry or or even some of our two story product would work on that.
With a seven, seven and a half foot side on. I'm worried, I was just looking at, you know, if there was ever a fire or something like that, you know, you get too close to each other, you got the same kind of problem.
Yeah, and I can speak to that. We, we actually see five foot setbacks now are fairly common. And then the fire ratings that we put into our homes address that issue. Um, you, you can read in the Liberty product that's in Winesap, for example, those. Those are uh, narrow lots, same, same setbacks, but we have a fire rating system that goes into both the, the roof for fire venting as well as the sidewall. So. Uh, we're not looking at that. I think uh, the fifty foot, it's gonna be unlikely that you're gonna have a house right at fifteen feet away from each other. That's just your standard setback that will. Most often, I think our houses are probably gonna be closer to forty-five foot width. Um, or in that upper section where the density is a little bit more compact. We might just be doing two. Two car garage homes. So then you, you're only using up maybe thirty-five or forty foot back.
So I, I guess I'm a little confused because I was looking like, I'm just comparing thirty-six to um. It's got the same size and dimensions that um. Forty-two has, no, I'm sorry. You're right. It's a fifteen inch or fifteen feet. Okay.
I think the other thing, just talking about density too, um, just a comment, I think the desired density up in this is actually three units per acre or greater. We're at one point six or one point seven. So it was, it was nearly impossible to get the density that is desired up here.
Right.
So the sixty-five foot was about the best way for us to do something close. I think other than that, you're, you're talking about stacks or you're talking about attached quads or six blocks, which that far away from. Town, townhomes don't work as well when they're further away from town. And that's where the impact would have been up there. I think it would have been difficult to, to get the buyer on that north end.
Uh, and the outlots are, are looking to be, you know, possible parks or something on that line?
Yeah, so your trail systems go through quite a few of the outlaw areas. What's that?
There's a trail system.
There should be a landscape plan towards the back.
Got it. Okay.
Yep. Trail system runs through the outlots and mostly outlaw areas where they don't. Um, you've got storm, storm systems and storm, stormwater. So those would come to the city for, for the city to own and uh. And then outside of that, you're, you're in outlots that are just the forest and wetland areas.
Do you have any further questions, Donnie?
Not at this time. Like to make a motion to approve. The Pine Vale preliminary plat as presented.
Brandon Crone, second.
The first and the second. Any further discussion? Do you know none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. If you're in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion possible approval ordinance thirteen dash one dash five two. Regulations within P U D. The district, uh, the change for required lot size from sixty-six feet to sixty-five feet. Union, more room and then more um, ordinance accordingly.
Ready for a second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, you gotta do it because you just approved it on this.
All favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Public Works. November eighth meeting report, discussion possible approval wastewater treatment facility service contract proposal. The fabric, Ken?
Yeah, so this is uh, the brand new generator that was. Um, installed with the wastewater treatment plant improvement. Um, this is the vendors maintenance. Uh, division that will come out, make sure that that generator is working within the manufacturer specifications and um. Moving out from that performance test. Um. It's an expensive generator, so you wanna make sure that all the right people are in there, um, in the performance evaluations, making sure that's running. Correctly.
And if there's warranty issues, there are a couple that are properly, properly warranted.
Brandon Crone, oh, sorry.
What?
Brandon Crone making motion approval, fabric that generator proposals for four thousand one hundred seventy dollars and eighty-five cents.
Josh Hackett, second.
Brandon Crone with the first, Josh Hackett with the second. Further discussion?
I'm just saying that this is a, you know, I mean, this is the manufacturer recommendation for. Text uh, be doing this. So that, that's to ensure any warranty issues are, are done. So we don't have issues like that with other companies that aren't manufacturer recommend.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. There's such a possible approval wastewater facility improvements payout number fifteen. And the amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Yes, would you like me to speak on this? Um. Yeah, we, we've reviewed their pay application and their support documentation and we are recommending approval at this time. Uh, to stop. Construction in the amount of forty-two, one thirty-seven point three five.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the wastewater treatment facility payout fifteen. The amount of four hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents.
Brandon Crone, second.
Caleb Garnett with the first, Brandon Crone with the second. Further discussion?
Just one thing that that puts us at substantive, uh, well over um, almost three quarters of a uh, completion. We have about eight hundred thousand left to complete. Complete this uh, this job. Outstanding, but.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion possible approval Main Street Bridge app pay number four and the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Six, or two hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and four cents.
Yeah, so pay application number four is to Lunda Construction Company. And uh, we are recommending approval and it was recommended for approval. By the Public Works Committee as well.
Brandon Crone making motion to approve payout four for the Main Street Bridge in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and four cents.
Second. Brandon Crone with the first, Caleb Garnett the second. Discussion.
Um, so just a quick order point of information on this, Chuck, is that put us at one, two uh, of the one-six? Is, i- if this is approved here? Or is, is that one, two, one point two seven, one eight six, six is at the um, before this payment?
The one-two-seven is before. We also. Um, it's, it's less than sixty-three or sixty-four thousand dollars in retainage there. And the total amount is on the front page there and it's the uh, the one point six, I believe, that you referenced.
The one point six, one eight is the total contract, but my question is, is after, is this, is the one-two prior to the two ninety-one or is the one-two after?
It's, it's after.
Okay, so if this is approved, we'll basically, we'll basically have one point two seven one of a one point six million dollar contract satisfied.
Well put.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Discussion possible approval Growing Wings payout number two, the amount of forty-three thousand seven hundred sixty dollars and thirty cents.
Yes, again, uh, Public Works as well as MSA is recommending approval. It's been reviewed. Uh, and, and it's to Miller Escavating Incorporated for forty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and thirty cents. And.
Along on that, Chuck, did they run in any rock or anything like that? Bedrock? I know we're worried about a little cobblestone and stuff like that going along pretty smoothly.
It go, we know, it went smoothly.
Okay. Fantastic.
Caleb, gonna make a motion to approve uh, Crone when you pay out number two, the amount of forty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and thirty cents.
I turn the second.
Caleb Garnett first, Donnie Kern with the second. Discussion, just final discussion. That should put us pretty much almost at the, the finish line except for retainage on this, on this payout or, or this contract, right?
That's correct. There's some testing and things involved, but uh, I don't have the pay up in front of me. I actually connect, attached the wrong one there, but if you have it in front of you. Yeah, I mean, all that's left is, is uh, to hook up. There's a little bit of more payment on the lift station itself. I think we've only paid seventy-five percent of that, but essentially once XL gets. That hooked up, you know, then it's just retainage at that point.
So for the most part, Growing Wings is pretty much done. We, we got a waste to go on the, the, the treatment facility and uh, we're over. Three quarters on, on the bridge. We're paid and done.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Public Safety, so a discussion possible approval ordinance ten dash one dash two eight, Baron B, Baron nine. Update language to no person shall stop, park, or allow any vehicle to stand at any time on the north or south side of Meadow Lane. Between County Road BV and Somerset Lane. Chris, you want to open this one?
Well, Public Safety has recommended approval for an ordinance amendment. It, it sounds like it was a change that was made some time ago and um, making sure it goes through, correct that ordinance?
If, if this is the same thing, it was the signs were put in, but the ordinance was never updated to reflect the science.
Caleb Garnett move to approve ordinance ten dash one dash twenty-eight, D nine. Uh, probably the written language.
Caleb Garnett first or second? Chris, do back with the second discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Finance. Personnel. November thirteenth meeting report, discussion possible approval, twenty twenty-three tax collection agreement.
This hasn't changed. Uh, we were informed that it's basically just gotta be renewed on an annual basis, I believe, right? Uh, but the cost for tax collection from the county hasn't changed on us. So it was recommended for approval by finance. And I so.
There a second? Second, Donnie Kern with the first, Caleb Garnett the second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Discussion possible approval twenty twenty-four budgets, general. Capital and debt funds. Like to make a motion to approve the, the budget as presented. Donnie Kern with the first, is there a second?
Chris, do back, I'm second.
Any further discussion? So this is the part where you go along, both her raise, it's where I vote name, there it is.
Um, that or under the weight. Or there's actually a resolution for the election.
I could approve this if I, so okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, same sign. Motion carries, discussion possible approval tax levy resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
Actually sixteen.
Dash sixteen.
My bad. It's correct on the document.
Twenty twenty-three dash sixteen is correct. Donnie Kern make a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash sixteen pursuant to the previous uh, order of approving the budget.
Second. Donnie Kern with the first, Caleb Garnett with the second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. If you're in. Discussion possible, possible approval twenty twenty-four health insurance renewal.
And this was recommended for approval with the understanding uh, from finance. Um, it's a fourteen percent increase, uh, but it was recommended for approval. We're down to the wire on this one as far as timing. Um, but we asked uh, with the recommendation for approval, that next year we look at other options as far as coverage and such to, to uh. Um, and had a lengthy discussion about that to engage the employees and or uh, you know, the rest of staff to. Different coverages offered out there to. Give the employees different options and possible cost savings to the village.
And to get it two months prior to.
Right. Two months prior. It's as soon as you can get it. With Donnie Kern with the first. Oh, I just said we, we talked about it. I have, I'm gonna give somebody else an opportunity.
Josh Hackett would like to make a motion for the approval of the twenty twenty-four health insurance renewal.
Josh Hackett with the first, is there a second?
Brandon Crone, second.
Brandon Crone with the second. Any further discussion? Do you know none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Twenty twenty-four dental insurance renewal.
Again, this was also recommended by finance to approve it. Uh, there has been more cost increase uh, submitted for this one. So it's basically a pass through. Um, however, it was also discussed that we look at different options for the employees because uh, in. Um, next year's budget cycle, uh, there are other options out there for dental that might offer them a better benefit.
Josh Hackett would like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four dental insurance renewal.
Josh Hackett with the first, is there a second? Second, Caleb Garnett with the second. Any further discussion? Caleb Garnett the second, any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Discussion possible approval twenty twenty-four wages.
It's also recommended by finance approval. There was lengthy discussion about the library uh wages and um and how they they come to those numbers. Uh that we saw were covered under a contract. Um and other all the others were basically agreed to the three percent increase across board. Along with the cost of living adjustment to be applied as a resolution. For the village president, trustees and trustee chair and the uh judge.
The motion? Pardon? The motion?
But somebody else wants to make it. I'll make a motion.
Don Curran makes the recommended recommendation, just a recommendation for the twenty twenty-four wages, is there a second?
Josh Hackett.
Josh Hackett with the second, any further discussion?
Yeah, I only comment on this as I I'm good with the wages increase for the library and all the folks that had their day job, but as far as for the trustees and for the election officials that they could not get a raise, so. I want that, I vote no overall.
You can make a motion to amend.
I would. Yeah, you'd make a motion to amend the wages to not include raises for the poll workers or for the um trustees or what's that?
I think you already have a motion to amend all of that table. We got a lot of that one.
You could amend it if it is. But first and a second on the table, um all in favor?
I.
I.
I go do roll call vote on this, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, do a roll call. Uh Don Curran?
I.
Caleb Garnett?
Nay.
Chris Dubak?
I'm abstaining. As an election worker, I believe I have to.
Just on that portion of this. Okay, Chris Marino?
I.
Myself, yes.
Brandon Crone, nay.
Josh Hackett.
The motion carries. Before two. One abstaining.
You want to make a motion to amend? No, who could?
Brandon Crone, I would make a motion to amend the motion to include. The strike wage increases for trustees and for election workers.
Brandon Crone with the first.
Second.
Caleb Garnett with the second, any further discussion?
I have a question. So we just approved this and you're asking to amend that. You're basically um. By by uh approving this amendment, you're going back on what the previous motion was uh that it was already approved. Is that correct?
Yep, you're saying so. Practical effect is to change that.
Right, so anybody that voted A on the on the first one should vote nay on this, right?
But sometimes it doesn't happen, you know.
Just clarifying.
Vote all, Donny? Nay. Caleb Garnett?
Uh yay.
Chris Dubak? Chris Marino?
Yay.
Myself, nay.
Brandon Crone, yay.
Um. I vote yay.
That one is it's been.
The second one was approved?
Mm-hmm.
Yep, well then the like. Ladies have been amended for that second vote. Fire rescue, that's over report.
Point of order.
There's two, there is two amended, so he's voting to amend the previous order?
Just started with the increase for election.
Right, we already approved the budget. And we uh so the budget was approved with the previous budget numbers that reflected on that, and now we approved. The recommendation of finance and now we put amendments, so do we have to go back and amend the budget? And uh revote the budget numbers now because we took them out?
Change, it didn't change the overall. Bottom line, it didn't change it. There wasn't an increase in expenses.
For sure, there was an increase in expenses.
There was adjustments made amongst the expenses. To balance it out.
I'm confused on the fact that we have uh already amended the the budget numbers to reflect what happened in finance, so that number needs to be. Revoted on and uh you know, with those budget numbers now being modified back to the original because you've just taken. Uh twenty-eight hundred dollars out of the expenses of the budget now by that by that amended motion. So how how is that? How is that to to work out?
We can put it towards the parks budget.
I could just reverse the adjustments that I did.
Without a vote?
Vote on it.
Huh? We did a vote. Yeah, or you can adjust money differently.
Right.
Make it work because if you're not talking about it, you keep so. Well, I want the attorney to go and do the work.
Any other questions? Fire rescue reports. With um forty-two calls for service, twenty-four in the village, thirteen of those medicals, nine. Fire rescue, ten in the township with seven medicals and uh three fire rescue calls. Eight auto eight calls, five in St. Joe, two in Richmond, and one in Star Prairie. This brings their total to three hundred and. Three hundred and seventy-one runs for the year compared to three hundred and seventy-four for the same time in twenty twenty-two. Discussion update on the village website, the de notified push email and text message status. Andrea, if you could um.
So we're like revive to get that update on. That's there's not really an update on that.
Have they been helpful, not helping? Just they can't seem to get it work?
Right.
Can we hopefully something next month?
I'll send out any now when.
Right, discussing possible approval Sean Weisen water and sewer restitution payment.
Mr. Chairman, I take the board uh the board for a minute. Yes, sir. Um you you see um in your packet also a copy of an email chain um. Coming back uh to kind of highlight this and to say, provided this to you guys all in writing uh. I'd like to outline for you the reason why the Sean Weisen restitution payment is on the agenda for tonight. Back in September, I had requested this item be brought up for discussion as the finance committee was preparing for budget discussions. And I wanted to know where the amount would be allocated to for budget, to which I was told it would be to water and sewer, so I requested a split breakup. Bob provided a split breakup forty-two, four thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and nine cents to the water utility. And nine thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars and sixty-eight cents to the sewer utility. I asked Bob for the timeframe of the restitution amount. He replied roughly eight years. This email chain should have been sent to you for tonight's meeting. The amounts have divided up over ninety-six months, eight years times twelve months would equate to forty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents per month for water. Four thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and nine cents divided by ninety-six months. And ninety-six dollars and fifty-eight cents additional per month for sewer. Nine thousand two hundred seventy-one dollars and sixty-eight cents divided by ninety-six months. Which seemed high for my usage. I asked some of my neighbors if their utility bills for water and sewer was around a hundred and forty dollars a month, and they said it'd be close in the summer, but hard to hit for the winter for them. Mind you, this is also in addition to the amounts that was paid by Mr. Weisen over this ninety-six month timeframe. Upon further investigation, I found out that Mr. Weisen only owned the house at three seventy-seven Pacman Drive since two thousand nineteen. According to public property tax records. Now, I'm not asking for us to relive this fact of the case of whether it regards the settlement was in fact or this this settlement. And whether the fact happened, however, I can't sit by with this knowledge that Mr. Weisen is required to pay for water usage for a home in which he did not own. And he would not be responsible for that water usage. I did not know this when it was brought to the attending of the board. And it wasn't brought in the public hearings that I was present at. I ask if any of the other board members had knowledge. That the house was owned by someone else named Megan Quinn during this timeframe prior to two thousand nineteen. So I would ask that only that the amount of restitution for the dates that Mr. Weisen had owned the home. Anything more than that would be considered making him required to pay for something he was not responsible for in essence, in essence, stealing from him. To make this right, the only best solution would be to reduce the months he owns, reduce it for the months he owned the house to as follows. In two thousand nineteen, sixteen hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-two cents annually. In two thousand twenty, sixteen hundred and eighty-five cents, sixteen hundred eighty-five dollars and nine fifty-two cents annually. And in twenty-one, eight months at uh would be three hundred and fifty-one for water and seven hundred seventy-three for sewer, which would be eleven twenty-three sixty-eight. Because in the new meter was replaced in the middle of August of two thousand twenty-one. For a grand tour of four thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents. I understand this agreement requires unanimous consent. For it to be modified, which was something that we all agreed upon that was uh prior to that. Which means that one person can prevent this from changing what is more a valid amount. However, I asked his board that if you were to be required to pay taxes and or water usage for someone else's home, how would that make you feel? I thank you for consideration, for your support to do the right thing by not requiring a person to pay for someone else. I'd like to make a motion according to to modify that amount to four thousand four hundred ninety-four dollars and seventy-two cents.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Yep, I've got some discussion. Though us, uh since he stole water, the rest of us did have to pay for his water, so in essence, we were paying for his water, which he stole. You're trying to say that we're trying to divide and figure out how much water he stole? That's what you're trying to say? So he's a thief and he stole. And we're trying to say he didn't steal as much as we thought he stole. He stole when he was in a public office and stole this water. We should have went after his wages. To ask for this is just disgusting. That's my comment.
Wasn't this a good?
Yes, he pleaded guilty. He did not plead guilty.
No contest.
Well, they didn't plead guilty, so state the facts on it. What I'm looking at is, I'm looking at what's what's right and what's wrong on this. And when you're saying somebody stole, you know, there was a a settlement that was put out there. And but I ask you this, has anybody on this board? Had the knowledge of this? I I felt I've brought it to this table because I found the knowledge of it and I felt it is necessary for us to have the discussion here. And you, I'm not saying you have to vote for it.
You should have figured you as his lawyer, it looks like.
I'm saying, I'm saying, Mr. Uh uh um. Mr. Crone, uh yeah, I expect respect from you just like everybody else. And uh all I'm saying is that I'm gonna bring it out here and let everybody decide. And if they can decide for their own and if they choose to to vote their conscience, at least I know I can sleep at night.
How can we vote? How can we change this agreement, though? I thought it was.
A unanimous consent.
I thought it was settled in the quarter.
The agreement can be changed. Agreement can be modified by unanimous consent. Number ten of the the um the agreement literally states that.
Can the attorney ask on that or talk on that?
That was cornered.
Well, I guess that was all done, it was all done before my time, but I guess the question I would have is typically these settlements. It's more than just gallons of water and the price of a gallon. There were costs that the village would have incurred to enforce that.
That wasn't part of that that settlement and whether discussed during the during the settlement clause.
Oh. Yeah, again, I wasn't wrong, but that's sometimes that somehow does come in. But it was the attorney fees and what's like.
That wasn't, that wasn't yeah, part of this this. Because I asked that question. That's why I was asking how it should go because the water authority didn't pay for the attorney's fees to go after it. The taxpayers did.
Right.
So the money going back to the water authority is going to the Water and Sewer Authority and not to the if if the if the. If the attorney's fees were part of that settlement, then then that money should go into the the general fund. And then I would I would be talking a different, a different uh conversation. But if the money is going to go strictly to the water and sewer utilities, then um. Then that's what needs to be discussed because, you know.
Will that share and lower everybody's water and sewer bill?
Will share and lower it yet?
Yes.
Well, highly doubted of share and lowering it. The water utilities are set.
Well, whatever, revisit it even.
Because I don't believe in, I don't believe in taking, I don't believe in asking somebody to pay for something that they didn't own a house. If the if you're saying, Brandon, in your point uh that he stole the water, well, technically. The person that owned the house before him stole the water. That was going to change, right?
Mr. Sullivan, please.
Is he renting? Is he renting?
Oh, I don't know. I I I'm just telling you the facts of what.
He charged for water before he even moved in.
That's what I, that's where I, that's why I brought this to your attention.
Well, was he living there at the time? And just renting? Is that why you're saying he's not?
Maybe it was his wife's, I don't know.
I I don't have enough information. I I am not, I don't. I'm really in the dark about that business of this, I'm afraid. I haven't seen the settlement. Is that available to us?
It was settlement was provided.
Settlement in September.
Yeah, it was provided to you guys in September.
Well, I think we could probably make a vote on it.
When was the utility bill put in his name, the water bill?
I would have to look at the.
We can't just vote on it. I'm gonna be a nay anyway, so we'll just hold on it.
Yeah, I think we can.
Roll call vote, sort of, Donny?
I.
Same.
I'm gonna abstain as well.
Nay.
I. Nay.
Nay.
Discussion possible approval annual budget res- resolution for elected officials and committee members.
Well, then you should take a vote on it and put a motion forward. Because you're saying that you wanted to uh refuse that and you got to vote to carry it, so put your motion forward to um deny the re- resolution.
Brandon Crone make a motion to deny the annual budget resolution for elected officials and committee members.
Brandon Crone, first or second? Second, Caleb Garnett the second. Any further discussion?
Is there a way that we can do that with who applies it, but maybe the election officials? I mean, I can see where. I I feel like the election officials should, but as far as us, I don't. I'm okay with that. You know what I mean?
But it's not even for us, it's for the other people behind us.
Right, we're not voting on it, we're not.
Oh.
This is voting, this is voting for the the people that.
But it's something. But it's but it's something, so then.
I thought it was to be like our wages and the workers.
Negative.
It's about to go up the resolution. This is for for future people down the line. And kind of the reason is to say, okay, if uh. If we're gonna give ourselves a three percent raise in the future, we look at the village, you know, as a whole, you know, how can we all save the taxpayer's money or? And we're you know, more like. Like a mind group.
It doesn't take that until another term. I understand that, but in essence, two more years while I'm here, I'm gonna get a raise, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so my question was, can the trustees not get their raise, but the poll workers get their raise is what I was getting at.
Two separate items.
I mean, isn't it, isn't it this what this?
You're asking Brandon to amend his motion.
Yeah, it would be, it would go back to the twenty twenty-four wage sheet because they're listed on there. This resolution is only for the village trustee and president.
Okay.
Right.
True. Thanks. All right.
The numbers first and the second, any further discussion? The numbers first and the second, any further discussion? On favor? Five, nine.
All right.
I have.
Sorry, opposed, same side, next. There is. Good amount.
Only ask six.
Yeah. Got the possible approval Somerset Champions recommendations?
Thank you. I thank you in advance to Andrea, who's gonna click through my slide. They got a lot of clicks and I don't know if somebody else would be doing all the clicking. My name is Kathy Ness. Uh, I am here representing the Somerset Champions Council. I co-chair the Champions with Kim Dunley. And I'm just here to talk a little bit about branding um. As far as as from the village standpoint, what's what's happened so far. Last time I was here, Mike asked us about it. It was definitely a a area of focus. Um, that slide, the black picture up there, that was the first slide from our presentation from the um. The community pride committee. And we had looked at at some areas that we thought we needed to focus to um to to create a community that we could all be proud of. And branding was at the top of our list and um in marketing, branding and reputation kind of go hand in hand. So um that was number one for us was was improving our reputation here in Somerset through our branding. Uh highlighting a positive, all of the positive things. We don't don't always do a great job at telling the story about all the good things that happen here in Somerset. Um, definitely, everything we heard from our information, ro- rivers and roads, um all the surveys that we saw. Everybody that was unanimous in that we wanted to convey a small town charm feel in Somerset. And then finally, we thought it was really important to co- to create a cohesive and professional branding message. And that's really what I'm gonna focus on. So if you could click to the next slide um. So if we look at some of the things here in Somerset, our branding traditionally has been inconsistent, um confusing and and honestly somewhat unprofessional. So as we were looking at branding, we had talked a lot about the logo. Um, and the logo wasn't as big of a concern for us as our tagline, beautiful, inviting and just across the river. We felt like that was um a little insulting to us as Somerset, Somersonians, as Kim would call it. Um, and and that all we had to offer was that our our proximity to Minnesota. Uh, so that was really, that really bothered us. Um, the um. And and it's inconsistent as well or inconsistent, so there's that we see that. Uh, we've seen Somerset, Apple River Country, Somerset, a plug and play, all these different, different taglines. Uh, so we'd like to really focus on something that's cohesive and really represents us as a community and and how we feel about our community. Down on the bottom, you'll see that's our current logo. Um, next to it is our prior logo, which I thought Bob's got that on his shirt. It's on some of the um, a lot of branding still. So we never even transitioned from our old logo to our new logo fully, because we didn't have a good plan in place and we didn't, we didn't um. We didn't really think think it through, I feel like is a good word. Um, and then the logo on the far right is from our YouTube page. Uh, as you can see, we've got pretty inconsistent branding, so.
I stole that from somewhere random for the YouTube page.
I love it. I I I absolutely love it. If that star was a heart, I would be all about it.
Okay, I took it from somewhere online. And I'm worried about Bob having to get new shirts. Sorry, okay.
It it's 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 rebranding isn't for the faint of heart and there's a lot to consider. So I just wanna make sure that we 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 have all of that at the forefront of all our decisions. So if we could move to the next slide, uh, one of the things that that we discovered is that during during our process, a couple of years ago. Somerset paid Eddie Advantage um to do a branding project for us. It was mostly geared toward economic development, which is where the tagline, beautiful, inviting, just across the river came from. Um, but I like ten thousand dollars we paid for this. We never even took it and implemented it fully. Um, so in along those lines, we thought for with good conscience. You know, we shouldn't really throw the baby out with the bathwater. We've got some really good workings in here. And this is actually done as a true um brand book and how rebranding a community should should work. So we felt like there's good guidelines there, um a good foundation for us if we wanna move forward with that kind of brand that has already been created for us. Um, and and this is gonna help us using that brand book, achieve our goal of creating our consistent cohesive message. Um, look more professional and really it's best practice when we're talking about rebranding something or really, you know, getting our message out there in marketing. Um, the the brand book right to the right of the Somerset one that Eddie Advantage did, that's the one that uh Becca Whitlock from the Chamber of Commerce did for us, the Somerset Champions. If you've ever worked with Becca and and had her do any sort of graphics, she does some amazing work. So um she took and basically did for us what Eddie Advantage charged ten grand for us to do. Um, to get us to our our um. Our logo, so if you can switch the next slide. So this is the Somerset Champions logo. So she, we, she worked with us, created the brand book. You know, we said we want elements of the apple and the trees and and um, you know, our our tagline, Somerset, it's good on you. And then she created this for us and she said, this is your your um logo for these applications, for our buttons, for our our sweatshirts and T-shirts. Uh, she created us in a rectangle um to use for the big sign that's out in front of the credit union that they covered for um the bridge opening celebration. Um, so we have different logos for our social media, for print, for um. Any, you know, when we do have a website and that's on our our list at some point. Anyway, what I'm, my point here is is that we've got this little gem right here in our community that has these skills and these um. The the vision to to do this kind of work, so and she's, I think she's more than willing to do it. Um. But if we can go to the next slide, um. Uh, so our official recommendations would be then to keep the same logo with minor modifications. And with minor modifications, really focus on that tagline. Um, and create a tagline that that best describes us as a community. Use the existing brand book and guidelines for using the logo and then create a marketing plan to ensure co- a cohesive use of the logo. This is really important and and this is gonna. Keep us from getting in this situation again where somebody says we need to rebrand and then we 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 do all this work, but we don't implement it. Um, so and then one more slide there. So um, oh, actually, those two are slides. So here's some taglines that resonated with us. Small town, big heart, proud past, promising future, real people, one of a kind, welcome home, you're welcome, and uniquely Somerset. And this we pulled from a list of over a hundred taglines that uh Becca, Becca kind of created for us. Um. I I like them all, so I think that if if the village does want to rebrand, that we 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 consider these. Maybe we ask the community to come in and vote on them. Maybe we do a contest for a new tagline, whatever that is. And then if we can look at the last slide, I took the first one, small town, big heart, or I didn't, Becca did. And I said, what could you do with this, Becca, with what we have so that the brand book that we have is still good and we can follow those guidelines? And this, these are just a few. And honestly, she she whipped out I at least fifty or sixty of them and sent them to me, so.
Is she on, is Becca on right now?
She's not.
No.
She's not, but no, but um I just think that. That we've got, we've got a lot of resources right here, right now, that we could use to um make things, make things um. Better with what we have without having to totally recreate the will. Um. So we're gonna leave that with you. It's not, so we're not, we're not, we're. The village's decision to decide how we move forward. Those are our recommendations. And however you decide to move forward, what I mean, we'll support you in any way. We, you know, we'd be happy to be a part of it, but I know that there was some kind of some positivity in this stuff.
Yeah. And I know um I asked Kathy last time, they, you guys hadn't had anything in the works yet. So I reached out to the art teachers at the school and I know they've been working on different options. So either board can look at maybe two, three, four different options and. We can have more options and pick the best one.
Yep, I I love that. I think our big concern is that we don't invest a lot of money in. In doing this this work again, so that we can be good students of our our residents' money and and but also have that look that's gonna say. Oh, my gosh, that looks like a great place to come visit. That looks like a great place to live.
Thank you.
So out of this, you have like four different recommendations, you know, suggestions that you kind of wanna bring bring forward for us to consider?
So the recommendations are that we we keep the logo with minor modifications.
Which you presented there.
It's on the slide. Create, I can, I can email the presentation if you want, or actually Andrea's got it, so you can email it out. Yep, keep the, keep the logo similar to what it is. Add a new tagline, use the the brand book, work with Becca to make any modifications that we see. And then um create a marketing plan so that so that we don't end up with stuff from two logos ago still hanging out. I mean, the shirts are a different story.
Would it be good to get Becky Olson, the art teacher, maybe in touch with you when you guys can kind of work together on what they're putting together and?
Or if you want to um assign this as a task to one of the committees that you already have. You know, that would be a nice partnership to work all together and then bring a formal recommendation to the board.
I'll reach out to Becky tomorrow and I'll get in touch with you guys.
And and which committee might that be? Would that be Public Works? Probably. Well, when 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 we're thinking about signage, you know, we talked a lot about this in our program, wayfinding signs, um the signs. So here's another thought, too. The big signs that we're raising money for right now, that logo is part of that plan. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna change anything drastically, we need to, we need to get something solid, because I think we're pretty close to having money to start on the first one.
Public Works will take it.
Okay. Thank you.
Done, you're okay with that? Go ahead.
Well, okay, look, do we take it?
Do we take?
Sure, okay. I'll stand.
Uh, done. Caleb, go ahead on the possible discussion possible approval lot used for the Somerset Chamber of Commerce.
So because of our glorious uh affectionately referred to Charlie Bound, the Christmas tree from last year. The stone. Um, we've set forth with a new plan uh from the Chamber for the Light the Night event. Uh, the intention is to put up a real tree uh which would be located in the wheelhouse coffee lot. Near the corner, so it wouldn't obstruct their uh flow of traffic for customers. Um, and then most of the other planned events that are occurring for lighting are on the same side of main. Basically, toward my happy place and up to my happy place. Uh, last year, we closed a chunk of a street. We're not asking for that this year. Um, didn't feel it was necessary just based on total attendance. Um. I don't know what other questions I can answer here. Of course, we'll get a um.
What's the timing of this?
The dig hotline.
Eight one one.
Carol, yeah. Uh, so we would get it uh put up roughly.
After, after Thanksgiving.
Um. Not quite that quick, but between there and December second.
Is this one of the three of us, the Public Works Board's gonna have to do again, like the stage?
Uh, you may get a phone call. Um, so I'm going to abstain from the vote due to my involvement with the Chamber who is asking. I am the head of the Chamber of Light and Night Committee for the full disclosure. If you have any questions.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the lot used for the Somerset Chamber of Commerce from. November twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three through January first, two thousand twenty-four. And the whole night of light, the night will be on December second from five P M. to eight P M.
Yes, exactly.
Further discussion? None, on favor?
I.
Opposed, same side? One abstain, one want attention. Discussion possible approval, village trustee, code of conduct.
Also. Chris and I um put this one on the agenda. Um, I kind of started with something that I just drafted. Uh, Paul had given me some additional stuff. Uh, and uh, Donnie had some additional comments to it. Um. So I guess I'll just leave it out. Uh, section one, respectful conduct, disrespectful personal comments, members shall conduct themselves with ability professional at all times, disparaging, disrespect disrespectful comments. Whether in public meetings, private discussions, or any reports are strictly prohibited. Um, you guys can just go through why we can't do all this at the end, I guess. Uh, residency clause, all members of the Somerset Village Board must reside within the village boundaries. Main residence is defined as a primary home where your where your member and your family live. Uh, attendance expected, attendance expectations, attendance clause, board members are expected to attend all regular scheduled board meetings. And important committee meetings, emphasis should be communicated in advance, reasonable effort should be made to ensure attendance. Uh, financial responsibilities, debt settlement, the village will not issue a paycheck to any individual, whether they are a board member or serving a non-paid capacity until outstanding debts the village have been satisfied. Eligibility, felony disqualification, individuals with nonparticularity convictions are not eligible to participate in any capacity related to Somerset Village Board. Also includes any committees. Repercussion for violations, uh violations, investigations, any alleged violations, code of conduct be thoroughly investigated by the board as a whole. Uh, first step, drop a man, second, suspension, uh third, removal, last is legal action. Uh, and then the last part is code of conduct will be periodically reviewed for update as necessary by the Ethics Committee or Village Board. By hearing to the Somerset Village Board Code of Conduct and collectively commit to serving our committee with integrity, our community with integrity, respect, dedication to its betterment. Violation of this code will not be tolerated in appropriate action that we take and maintain in trust and honor for roles of those board members. That was what I put forth, just as a draft. Uh, Donnie, I don't know if you wanna reply with.
I I have one question on that. On the attendance, don't we have something in our current ordinances on attendance?
I think there is.
So by putting this forward, is that gonna conflict with that ordinance? What's the current ordinance say?
I see many, so many, it can be removed by the the board.
So it's in the ordinance already?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So of what my my statement was that I think under the first uh section, if you turn to page two, you can obviously see what what um. I said, and I I I do request and I said, say this. Uh, because I'm under the understanding with section four, under financial responsibility, by by agreeing to this, that we'd be in violation of Fair Labor Standards Act. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, I guess. I looked at this. I made my comments before I saw your comments. And we're pretty much on the same page, you and I, in terms of comments on this. Not to say that it's not a good starting point in more discussions, and I think it's important to bring this stuff out. But a lot of what you have is either already covered under state law. Or under village code, or it's gonna cause like the delay if you was just gonna get you in trouble with the state on a wage violation.
Yeah, no, I just think that if you you work for someone and you owe them money, that you shouldn't get a paycheck or you should, that should come out of that money. But I, if there's laws against things like that, then.
So I I think it's a good discussion to have, and that's why I sent you some of those examples.
Yeah, so what I I I stated in here was, in a in a purpose of trying to work together on that is that. You know, the deleted ones, as you would just say, as members of the Somerset Village Board, we're committed to holding the highest standards of ethical behavior, accountability and dedication to the betterment of our community. Members shall conduct themselves with civility and professionalism at all times. And then it says, uh, then I go on to read that. We as Somerset Village Board members collectively commit to serving our community with integrity, respect and dedication to its betterment. That is is basically what we're asking to do for a code of conduct, and it should cover everything you got that isn't already covered by state statute and we're trying to violate a law. So I was working, trying to see where you're coming from here with the code of conduct that meets and and raises the, puts a bar uh that we all have to live by.
That's all I can ask.
I may like to make a motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Was there any, any other buddy that has any responses or something?
I have more time. And probably some discussion with Paul. Um, I move that we table, table it until January, December, something like that.
Do we have an ethics committee?
No, it's not even in our ordinance, is it?
There are ethics committee in there, sorry.
Right.
We're not at the board, we don't have one of those yet.
Well, I support that, 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 you know, the changes that I, I put forward are acceptable to them as, um, as a way of putting forth a start, and if you wanted to build on that, you could always bring forth something yourself after you've had that conversation. But at least then you have somewhat of a, a bar that you can point to. And we also can, you know, it'll steer us and guide us as trustees to, to, uh, uphold ourselves in a professional manner.
That motion?
Well, I'm waiting for, he's got a motion on the floor, so I, there hasn't, I'm waiting for, if there, nobody takes a second to table it, then I would make a motion for it. I'm not going to do that until that's dead.
I'll second the motion to table. Further discussion?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. The votes same time?
Table. Most of the go into closed session, roll call. You gotta read it out, I think, you know, you go. The board may convene if the quote in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin stats, nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent G, for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the village of Somerset who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved with respect to ongoing instruction at seven ten Spring Street and village property at one twenty eight Spring Street in pursuit to WIS stats nineteen twenty five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, then investing in public properties or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Econom- and economic development update. We'll call votes, or with Donnie?
Aye.
Close session?
Yeah.
Second?
Oh.
Motion seconded, nine vote, aye.
Caleb Garner?
Aye.
Chris Dubak?
Aye.
Christopherino?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Brandon Crowe?
Aye.
Joshak?
Aye.
We are now convening closed session. You guys?
There's still people on, um, they've been in meetings. Well, not, I don't know about there, but on the Zoom.
Reconvening to, are we good to go, it's, the TV's not on anymore, so I can't tell.
Yeah, we're good.
Reconvening to open session at eight forty three P M. Brandon Crowe make a motion to approve Village Water and Sewer Bills as presented.
Caleb Garner, second.
Brandon Crowe, it's first, Caleb Garner with the second, any further discussion? If you're none on favor?
Aye.
Call the same sign. Motion carries. Brandon Crowe, Crowe make the motion to adjourn, Caleb Garner with the second. Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Call the same sign. Motion for meeting is adjourned at eight forty four P M.